Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Decal Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this Monday, December 18th. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Becker?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Penny Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
Seven Plats.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
A move to approve is submitted.
Moved by O'Flaherty. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We will go to the approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2023. Again, if there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Becker. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by McMahon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the program. If there's anyone that has anything they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward. If not, we will move to new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by OLPoa Properties LLC, represented by Neville Gallon, for the approval of the rezoning of the subject site at 122 Cotton Avenue from the SRF-2 Single Family Residential District to the TFR-2 Family Residential District, and requesting a special use permit to allow dwelling units on a lot less, excuse me, on a lot that does not meet the minimum lot size requirements. I understand we have a presentation from the folks that are...
Yes, it's me, sir.
Yeah, if you just please step up to the microphone, just state your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Yeah, my name's Neville Gallon. I live in Elgin, but I have rental properties here in the Decal area, which I fix up and remodel. 2018, I bought this property at Cotton Avenue. It was a HUD foreclosure, so it apparently had a conforming, nonconforming zoning approval to it. And so even before I bought it, unknown to me, it was, it already lost its zoning because being a foreclosure, it was already, the, 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 conforming, nonconforming is a six-month limit to it being vacant. Anything more than that, that makes it lose its zoning. So I bought it and, you know, as an investment. At the same time, I was fixing up other properties that I have here, so it's sat vacant for a few years. But now, we wanted to start working on it, and that's when I discovered the, the, the problem that we have now, that it's lost its, its, it's a two-flat, and it's lost its zoning privilege. So I'm petitioning that we could have it turned back into, or zoned as a two-family property. It is smaller than the other lots in the street. It's kind of an eyesore for most of the properties in the street there. Things are, as you know, things are changing in Decal. There's lots of new industry moving in, lots of more people, you know, coming in as well with it. They are increasing the values of the property. In that street, in Cotton, there's two properties sold just this month, in the last six months. One for just down the road on the, on the corner, one had sold for $246,000. And then back up the street a little bit more, on the same side as this property, with one sold for almost $170. And then you've got this thing sitting here, that's, so it's detracting from, you know, from what could be, you know, the potential of, of what could be there. We're quite happy to bring it up to the standard where it should be. So, um, the, the, to the, to the south, you've got the, you know, the Facebook, Facebook's built that big building. You've got Farrah, Farrah, Farrah Chocolates. You've got, see, that, that's how it was before. We refer to it lovingly as the Pink House because all the bottom section was painted pink. But we've, since then, we've, you know, just to get rid of that, it was wicked ugly to walk, to drive past, so we painted the bottom section white. And that's when we discovered that you can't, that we couldn't work on it anymore, because we have to get it zoned first. But with all the people moving in and the, and the industry, I think Kraft, Kraft Heinz is building a new, new factory down that way. So in this area of where the, where the new construction's going in, there's not a lot of affordable rental properties in that area, especially for people on a second shift, people working at night shift. This is very close to that location. I think it would be helpful for the people in the neighborhood that would allow it to be a rental, a rental property, they're going back to be zoned as a two-family rental. Also, there's, when it was built, it's been built a long, long time ago. It was, the city at one point gave it the correct zoning to allow it to be two-family. You know, there's been, you know, a lot of the neighbors that live in the area there, the gentleman right next door, his name's Howard McDermott, he wrote a letter. Howard's elderly now, retired, and, and I think you have a copy of the letter. It says that he's lived there all his life, and as long as he's lived there, that property has always been a rental. So speaking to the fact that it, at one point when it was built, it was given that, that zoning status of being a multifamily. Next, to the south of it is CSR Forklift Bobcat. Paul, Paul Meyer is the, the gentleman. He said if anyone has any concern, or he's very supportive of it, he's, he's, he's allowed me to use his name. So, you know, the inside, the outside, everything needs fixing. We want to put driveways in on the side so we can keep parking off the street. I think we're, we're supposed to put in 10 feet wide by 40 feet long, so you can have at least two vehicles. You see in the, in the plan, in the plat at least. So we'll do two on either side because it's a two-family. It, new roofing, needs to have new roof, new windows, new, new everything. You know, and you, we'd like to get it sited on the outside, new siding on the outside eventually, once we get down the road. But inside is, it's, it's a, you probably go to some photos on the inside. That's the entrance going in. One stairs goes, the stairs goes to the upstairs, and the door on the left there takes you into the first floor. And they're both mirrored. The layouts are exactly the same. The living room, bathrooms, that's what the insides looks like. One of the bedrooms, it's a two-bedroom, both of them are two-bedrooms. That's the kitchen. The whole kitchen would be replaced. In there, all the flooring would put in, you know, put in wood flooring. Is, in, in the, in your package there is samples of some of the other properties that we've remodeled as, as evidence of, we're not a shonky, you know, shoddy workmanship. We, we put in, we put in good, we put in things that's good enough for anyone would, would be happy to live there. So, um... That's a, if any questions, a...
Thank you, Mr. Gallon. We'll, we'll go to a staff report, and then if we have any questions, we'll call you back up. But thank you.
Yes, thank you. Neville went very well through the, the history of the site. So the site is a zone, single-family. Not sure the history of it, or when it went to a two-unit, but it's pretty well established. From Mr. Gallon and the neighbors, it was a two-unit, and you can tell from the inside it was for many years. In 2018, the owner, applicant bought it, and at that time, it was vacant. He bought it from HUD, and it's been vacant since then. So, looks like it was illegal, nonconforming use, but that's lost once the, after six months, it remained vacant. So, you'd have to rezone it to a two-family residential, which the applicant applied for, and also a special use permit, because the lot size is not quite the required for TFR zoning. So, you know, like to establish a unit on the ground level and one on the second level, like it was before. The minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet for two-family dwellings in the TFR. The lot's about a little over 4,800 square feet, so under, but as you can see, and the lot was actually recorded, checking back, in 1894. So it's been there quite a while. There's some other smaller lots. In fact, the one just north of it is even smaller. And there's some other lots that don't quite meet the single-family minimum lot size, on the, particularly on the east side of Cotton Avenue. So, when we look at something that does meet the minimum lot size, what did we, what did we focus on? In this case, it was the parking. We want to make sure there was room to put some parking on there. There's two spaces required for each unit, so a total of four. And we took the survey and drew up, looking at the dimensions, we could get a nine, or 10 by 40 driveway on both the north and south sides of the building, at 10-foot wide. That will accommodate two space, parking spaces, one in front of the other, not side to side. That's, there's not enough width for that. But they can get adequate off-street parking per the Unified Development Ordinance, which we look for. This is the north side of the structure. At one time, there was a, a drive there. You can see the curb is depressed there, so it was going in, but it's just the grass now and gravel. So, this will be paved, meeting the ordinance requirements. That's the north side. And then on the south side, they do have room to do the same thing, to get two spaces in there. So it'll be, get any cars off the street, they'll be able to park on the site. That's what we kind of focused on in terms of the lot area. So they do have enough lot area to do that and meet the requirements. And the zoning, put the zoning map up here. Brett is a general commercial that is to the east and south of the site. The Bobcat dealer's very close, of course, so we saw this as going to two-family, and it's single-family. Everything is north, a single-family. This was good transition zoning from the commercial, heavy commercial. It's, you know, a lot of outside storage there. You can see the Bobcat dealer here and the structure there, of how close that is. And they park right up to, and store things right up to the streets, or sidewalks, excuse me. So, we thought that was a reasonable transition and zoning for the site made sense. It's a good transition zoning. So, the standards for rezoning, we list all the criteria. They do meet that. The 2022 comp plan calls for low-density residential, but you can see that it's adjacent to commercial sites, so it'd be good, appropriate for two-family residential zoning, a good transition to the single-family area. They have adequate, meet all the standards, except for the lot area, which they can accommodate the two driveways, which we're looking for. It's, it's not going to hurt adjacent property or the values. It's going to increase the value, help the neighborhood look better. And there's adequate utilities to the site already. There's separate meters for water and sewer already to the unit, so he has that. Special use standards, kind of the same thing. On the lot size, again, it was a lot created many, a long time ago. And some of the other lots in that area are smaller too, so it's not going to do any damage to the values of those properties. And again, the key, they can get two new driveways on the site, accommodate the parking. We did receive, since the agenda was posted last Thursday, a, a letter from Joining Only Right to the North, as mentioned, Mr. McDermott, here, McDermott at 130 Cotton Avenue. His letter just notes the history. It's always been a two-flat rental. I assume he approves of the rezoning also. And then late this afternoon, I received a call. Usually I get things in, I like to get things in writing, but got a call from Angela Foss at 136 Cotton Avenue that said questions, particularly on the parking. I said they're going to have two new driveways that will get the four spaces off the street, and she indicated that was good, that she had no problem with the request. So there's a sample motion recommending approval, a couple, that proves Exhibit A, that shows the two new driveways. That's Exhibit A. And a couple of conditions. Prior to the construction of the two new driveways, they have to submit a site plan, submit it indicating more details of the work needed in the right-of-way, in the curb and the apron. You know, they're going to have to improve the curbing here and the apron, and on the other side, it's, you know, grass here, so they're going to have to make some improvements there, prior to city engineer. And also removal of the, the, there's a planter box, mailbox, that's going to be removed. This private walk needs to be leveled out and widened, and the stoop in the front needs to be leveled. And there might be some work in the public sidewalk. So that's condition number two, and that would be per the approval of the city engineer and chief building official. And the conditions have been okay to approve by Mr. Gallon with the approval. So, happy anniversary. Are there any questions you might have?
Okay. Thank you, Dan. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak to this, if not, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion from the commission. Makes perfectly good sense to me. Dan, I am curious, though, how did the, how did the change in, occur in the zoning as a sunset portion of it being...
Well, I don't think that, he didn't lose his zoning. His zoning's been single-family since the earliest zoning maps I could find. It was built prior to that, probably, I think the 40s or 50s, most of these structures were built. And perhaps at that time, it allowed two units. I don't know the history. We don't have the records to show when that second unit was put in there. I assume it was done illegally. We just, we just don't know. So, but it's, two units required TFR zoning, so once it became, lost that legal nonconforming status after six months, then they have to comply, and they want to do something, reestablish it, so.
So the sale history was single-family as well?
I don't know the sales history. You know, HUD had owned it before Mr. Gallon take it, so...
Sure.
We're addressing it. I just, we, we can't nail down the exact history of it. There could be some other, I think there's some other two units in that area, neighborhood.
I'm sure there's a lot of them.
Yeah. Yeah. They're hard to nail down exactly when they went in, and if they were done legally or not, but...
Okay. Comments, questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning of subject site at 122 Cotton Avenue from the SFR-2 Single Family Residential District to the TFR-2 Family Residential District, and approval of a special use permit to allow two dwelling units on a lot that does not meet the minimum lot size requirements per Exhibit A dated December 14th, 2023, and subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the construction of the two new driveways, a site plan shall be submitted indicating the details and the work needed in the right-of-way, curb and apron, and the proposed materials for the driveways. And two, the removal of a stone planter slash mailbox, widening of the private sidewalk, the leveling of the front porch, and the upgrade of the public sidewalk shall be conducted prior to the occupancy of the structure for the approval of the city engineer and the chief building official.
So moved by O'Flaherty. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wright. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penny Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallon.
Very appreciated. Thank you.
Good luck. The second item we have tonight is another public hearing, a petition by Habitat for Humanity of Decal County, represented by Kim McIver, for approval of the rezoning of the subject site at 1209 Pleasant Street, from the LC Light Commercial District to the RC-1 Residential Conservation District, a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling unit duplex, and approval of a minor subdivision plat. Would you like to step forward and...
Hello, my name is Sherri Cosmos, K-O-S-M-O-S. Our office for Habitat is at 308 State Street in Sycamore. I'm actually one of the board members, and I do a lot of the preconstruction stuff. So Habitat recently acquired the property on Pleasant Street, and then our intention for that lot is to build a duplex, which we've submitted a sample site plan. If it's on the lot, the intent, or I should say, we're requesting a zoning change so that we can do a duplex on this lot. I, and then, oh, go back to the first one.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, that one. We have several mature trees on the site. The intent is to try and save them because it reduces our cost, so that we don't have to remove them. And we're also planning on starting the design of the structure after approval, if we get through this process. So currently, we're receiving applications for the duplex in hope of identifying our partner family in the next couple of months. The selections obviously will impact our design to dictate how many bedrooms we do. The lot will be subdivided as required. And then our vision for it, if you go to the elevations, there you go. We're looking at doing a ranch home, because a lot of our applicants, we need to make it accessible or able to be converted to be accessible. So we're looking to do ranch homes, single-car garages. In talking with staff, they would prefer a single curb cut, so we have no problem putting the driveways together. And then in trying to make the elevation a little bit more interesting, we're looking at trying to dress up the front with probably doing a covered front entryway, and then some articulation of the roof line. And the other thing that I'd say is that construction is just anticipated to start in the spring of 2024, with the hopes of moving the families in and closing on their mortgages by the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a staff report to go with that?
Yes. I'm sure you went through very well. So the, the request is a rezoning from light commercial to residential conservation district. Along Pleasant Street, I have the zoning map, it's in your packet. A little unusual. There's a lot of light commercial zoning along Pleasant Street from 14th Street all the way to just past 11th Street. Here's a subject lot there. A lot of these are mostly residential, some two-family, multifamily, and then a little bit of commercial there. Actually, in the comp plan we did last year, we just designated what the commercial was, recognized the commercial properties there in red, and the residential in the yellow there. So, our direction was, you know, we don't see expansion of the commercial to match the zoning. So over time, we anticipate something like this, where somebody would come in with a, want to build a home or a duplex, and then they would get it rezoned from the light commercial to match residential conservation district, to match the zoning of the residential areas surrounding it. So that's the rezoning. Get it out of the light commercial to residential conservation district, and a special use permit is required for a two-family dwelling unit in that zoning district. And then they're doing a single-family, or a two-lot subdivision. This shows the lot over here that was a, a few years back. That's a straight-on shot from a few years back. That's within the last couple weeks, just looking at the lot there. As you can see, there is some mature trees, which they are going to fit, no trees will be lost with the layout of the dwelling units there, so that's good. And they'll bring the one driveway right off the site. So they've met with staff, our city engineer, chief building official a few times discussing the site. So they do have adequate lot size. It's required 7,000. It's a 7,200 square foot lot, so they meet that. They can meet all the setbacks with their building layout. There'd be a lot down the common wall line. They meet all the setbacks for that. They have two options for the elevations. I don't think they've chosen yet, but these are kind of samples of what it probably would look like, one-car garages with a common drive. So our comp plan calls for medium-density residential. They're a little bit over that, but it's consistent with the density in the, in the neighborhood. There's two-family directly to the east of the site, across the street. This is across the road where you have some more multifamily and some commercial, you know, contractors, garages, storage areas, and some, as you go further east, restaurants, grocery stores, et cetera. So a little mix along Pleasant Street, as you probably know. So this is consistent with the comp plan. Even the 2001 Pleasant Street plan that was done many years ago called for things like this, particularly the appearance objectives that were in that plan. So, the standards for rezoning, they meet. It's consistent with the zoning to the north. There's a lot of RC-1 zoning in that area. It's in compliance with the comp plan. Meets the UDO requirements. They can meet the, all the front, rear, and side yard setbacks on the site. They'll be served by separate water and sanitary sewer to each unit, so the utilities will be separated as required. And they meet all the special use requirements too, and the criteria and findings are in your packet. We received one public response form from James Franklin. He's the owner of the home directly to the west, at 1203, directly west. He notes support for the request. Prepared a sample motion that approves the plat, labeled Exhibit A, subject to all staff comments being addressed prior to the recording of the plat, and subject to the condition, the exterior of the two dwelling units shall remain compatible in relation to colors, materials, and architecture. This was, the condition was added at our last. We've done a few, as you recall, the existing duplexes where they come in and subdivide and create two lots down the common wall. This was a condition added in by one of the council members at the last one to make sure the, down the road, they don't come in, and one of the owners wants to paint their, something totally different than what the others doing, and make them incompatible. So with special uses, you can prove conditions, so that's what we're recommending, that condition, and the applicants agreed with the recommendation the staffs made.
Okay. Thank you very much. If anybody else would like to speak to this, if not, I will close the public hearing and open it up for comments from the commission. I think it's an excellent use of the splitting, the lot-splitting rule for, that we've seen several times recently.
Agreed.
I'll make the motion.
I'll ask you to make the motion.
She's warmed up after.
I am. I'm warmed up. Okay.
Easy for her to say. It's only a page long.
Yes. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact, and recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning of subject site at 1209 Pleasant Street, from the LC Light Commercial District to the RC-1 Residential Conservation District, special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling unit duplex, and approval of a minor subdivision plat dated November 6th, 2023, labeled as Exhibit A, subject to all staff comments being addressed prior to the recording of the plat, and subject to the condition, the exterior of the two dwelling units shall remain compatible in relation to the colors, materials, and architecture.
So moved by O'Flaherty. May I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Penny Graham. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penny Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck.
Now the real work begins, right?
We have a new calendar, or I'm sorry, yeah, a new calendar for 2024 that Stephanie has kindly distributed to us. Do we have more on the staff report for the upcoming year?
Yeah, just next meeting, as you can see on their calendar for next year. The January 16th, as I mentioned, we'll cancel that the Thursday before. So January 16th, that's a Tuesday after the holiday. Looks like we got one hearing for sure, and probably another one. Retail tobacco store, actually in the junction that's currently there, they're relocating to another tenant space, a little bit larger, but that needs a special use, new special use, because there's some setback requirements in that. And then you'll get more information either this week, early next week, another hearing. It's a rezoning property on Route 38 and Webster Road on the east side of the city for industrial-type use, or smaller one. So those are the two. And the council meeting also is not meeting a second time, so the items tonight will be on the January 8th council meeting. So, last meeting of the year. Happy holidays to all the commission members.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays to everyone. Your hard work this year.
Have a wonderful start to 2024.
Yes.
All right. Well, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Becker. May I have a second, please? May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Tell you, one of these days.